Please take your seats.
Oh, precious.
Welcome to this evening's meeting. We're going to have the invocation by Senior Pastor Devon Ward of Victorious Life Bible Church out of Hampton, be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand with me. Pastor.
Good evening. May we pray? God our help in ages past, a very present helping times of trouble we've come to. Thank you tonight for bringing us safe thus far. Pray, God, that you would lead us and guide us as we discuss the business of this community, God. We thank you for this Board of Commissioners. Thank you, God, that you have blessed us with them, God, and we thank you for their minds, God. And we pray, God, for unity on tonight. You said in your word, where there is unity, there is strength. Said, "A house divided against itself shall not stand." So we pray for unity tonight, God. We pray for clearness of mind, God. We pray for a peace that surpasses all understanding, God, and we pray that you will bless each and every one of us as we continue to do work in the business of Clayton County, that you would give us all of your blessings and that there will be no confusion, God, and that we can be able to live peaceably among each other. Bless this meeting tonight as it goes forth. It's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the February 6, 2018 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any member want to offer any amendments?
Yes, I have a couple of items I'd like to see added. First one would be to add a proclamation for the Jonesboro Falcons 12 and under football team. Had an excellent season. They went eight and oh during the regular season and they competed in the Frank Ski Championship Bowl. They were absolutely... (applause). I believe they were the runner-up, but they represented us well and we definitely appreciate all they do. So is there a second to this motion to add a proclamation?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Is unanimous? The second item I'd like to see added is an item that I would like Mr. Hancock to explain the urgency of.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. We would ask that you add consideration of a contract between the Board of Education and Clayton County for the improvement of Steel Road, July 18, 2017. You authorized an original intergovernmental agreement between those parties because the bid, the contract is on your agenda tonight for approval. That agreement has subsequently been modified in its terms, not monetarily, as far as what the parties are going to do. The reason that it is urgent is that the goal is to complete this project by August 1st so that the Board of Education can open the schools that they'll be serving and two more weeks is a real hardship on them. So we'd ask that you add it to the agenda.
Okay, I place that in formal motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
I think we'll give that one to Commissioner Gregory.
Thank you.
All right. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Is unanimous?
Are there any further amendments? Hearing now, may we have your motion to adopt the agenda with the approved amendments?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Is there a second?
Second, please.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Oppose? Is unanimous?
Okay. The Board has three proclamations to present tonight. The first proclamation, Clayton County recognizes Severe Weather Awareness Week as presented by Chairman Turner. Will Chief Landry Murkison as well as staff please come forward as the Commissioners join you for the presentation of the proclamation? And now the reading of the proclamation. Clayton County recognizes Severe Weather Awareness Week 2018. Whereas each year Clayton County citizens face the threat of severe weather events such as lightning, thunderstorms, floods, flash floods, hailstorms, tornadoes, and hurricanes, all potentially dangerous to life, health, and property. And whereas, the entire Atlanta metro area suffered from winter storm packs in 2014 which caused over 40,000 power outages, dozens of vehicle accidents, and many trees and power lines down in Clayton County. And whereas, the effects of Hurricane Irma in 2017 left a lasting impression and should serve as a caution that Clayton County is susceptible to all kinds of dangerous weather, even storms that are generated from many miles away. And whereas, it is essential that effective public education programs concerning severe weather systems and preparedness continue for the benefit of all. Clayton County citizens are encouraged to have multiple ways to receive weather alerts including monitoring local media, NOAA weather radio, and Clayton County's Ready Clayton app. And whereas, Clayton County Fire and Emergency Services and all departments and agencies of Clayton County Government, Georgia Emergency Management Agency, and the National Weather Service are committed to continuing efforts to inform citizens on safety and severe weather preparedness procedures so they may better protect themselves, their families, neighbors, and their communities. Now therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the week of February 5th through the 9th, 2018 as Severe Weather Awareness Week in Clayton County, Georgia, and encourage our citizens to become more aware of severe weather safety measures and to participate in the various awareness programs scheduled during the week. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 6th day of February in the year of our Lord, 2018. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman.[501.18][501.18](applause). And the next proclamation recognizes NCNW's Self-Love: It's a Family Affair on February 10, 2018. With the members of NCNW, please come forward. As well as the Office of Youth Services. This proclamation is presented by Commissioner Felicia Franklin Warner.
While the microphone is coming up, we're going to have to read this one. We're actually doing this event in conjunction with Henry County and as you know, they're having their board meeting as well. But I wanted to commend our youth commission as well as Office of Youth Services for the phenomenal event they did at the Team Summit. And so they turned around and are prepared for another one. I can go ahead and read it if you all can hear me. Thank you, I'm sorry. Clayton County recognizes the self-love is a family affair promoting health and wellness by the Henry Clayton National Council of Negro Women, Inc. Whereas Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune was born a child of former slaves. She was a world-renowned educator, human rights activist, and counsel to former United States Presidents. Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune saw the potential for change in the African-American communities and established a coalition of women thus forming the National Coalition of Negro Women on December 5, 1935. And whereas, five women recognized the good works of the National Council of Negro Women and its need in Henry County and Clayton County, Georgia, communities on January 10, 2017 through the vision of Dr. Mary McLeod Bethune, a section now known as the Henry Clayton Section of National Council of Negro Women. And whereas, the National Council of Negro Women recognized and approved the Henry Clayton Section with Ms. Ingrid Saunders Jones as our national chair and the Board of Directors as a community-based section of the National Council of Negro Women on June 26, 2017. And whereas, while this is the first time that Henry County has ever had an NCNW section, this is not the first time for Clayton County. The Henry Clayton Section of NCNW officers and members are honored to serve the neighboring communities. And whereas, the month of February is both Black History Month as well as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. The Henry Clayton Section of the National Council of Negro Women is presenting an event entitled Self-Love: It's a Family Affair, promoting health and wellness of the mind, body, and soul for all family members in partnership with the Henry County Commissioner, Bruce Holmes, the Clayton County Office of Youth Services, the Clayton County Health Department, as well as FYI Events on February 10, 2018 at Mondays Mill High School. Now therefore, on behalf of Clayton County Board of Commissioners, I, Felicia Franklin Warner, Commissioner, do hereby proclaim February 10, 2018 as Self-Love: It's a Family Affair Day in celebration of Black History Month as well as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month in the state of Georgia. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 6th day of February in the year 2018. Felicia Franklin Warner.[770.56][770.56](applause). We hope you can all come on this Saturday.
And the last proclamation for this evening. Clayton County recognizes a Jonesboro Falcons 12 U football team as presented by Chairman Turner. Will the team please come forward as well as coaches?[835.82][835.82](applause). Parents, family members, please come forward.
Parents, family, everybody, everybody. Family, family, parents, come on.
We don't need a platform for pictures after a while.
Hey. Okay. What you got, okay?
Do it again, Bill. We got some dinnies on.
My stomach getting that way. Yeah, I'll be somewhere. Sorry to me, guys. All right, hold on. And one more. All right, very good.
And now the reading of the proclamation. Clayton County recognizes a Jonesboro Falcons 12 U football team. Whereas during the 2017 football season, the hard work, dedication, sportsmanship, and talent of the Jonesboro Falcons 12 U football team has enabled these student athletes to accomplish an undefeated regular football season with a win record of eight games. And whereas, the Jonesboro Falcons 12 U football team won the 2017 Southern Premier Youth Football Championship and competed in the 2017 Frank Ski Championship Bowl. And whereas, the 2017 Jonesboro Falcons 12 U football team included Jordan Johnson, Daquan White, Nareek Sharp, Jacob Cockrell Jr., Cayman Bush, Sean Jarrett, Jacari Hardaway, Desmond Grant, Ali Abdul Hakim, Willie McKinney, Caesar Rodriguez, Kaywan Kimber, Tremaine Hall, Tyquan Hollis, Myles Butler, Rodney Shelley Jr., Ricky McKinney, Jalen Romero, Andre Chautick Jr., DeMarcus Morris, Rico Scantritt, Phoenix McKinney, Joshua Horton, Javion Miller. And whereas, head coach David White, the entire coaching staff, and team member parents were integral in guiding the team to victory through their unwavering support. And whereas, the Jonesboro Falcons 12 U football team won the support and hearts of the citizens of Clayton County by displaying pride, good character, team spirit, and perseverance throughout the 2017 football season. And therefore, I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman, on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby congratulate and celebrate the outstanding achievements of the Jonesboro Falcons 12 U football team. I wish you great success as you continue to excel in the sport of football. In witness thereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this 6th day of February in the year 2018. Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman.[1143.44][1143.44](applause).
All right, all right, all right.
The Board will now hear a presentation on the Mountain View Area Urban Land Institute Technical Assistance Panel study.
Good evening, Chairman and the Board. We have the privilege and the pleasure today to have a presentation that be brought forth to us by Mr. Jay Silverman and he has some of his colleagues that was part of the technical assistance panel. We received a grant through our Community Development Department and we had a couple of days for which they had an opportunity to kind of work around the Mountain View area and provide us some recommendations as to things that might, the Board might want to take into consideration as we talk about build-out and economic development in that respective space. So I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Jay Silverman.
Thank you very much. I'm Jay Silverman, an architect with Doyle Design Studio and the Technical Assistance Program Committee Chair for the Urban Land Institute. And, oops. ULI is a national and even international organization founded in 1936 and we've got over 40,000 members around the world. And our, we, as an organization, it's very common for Urban Land Institute to come into a community and tackle challenging land use issues and we do that through what's called the Technical Assistance Program or TAP for short. And so we often try to help governments or not-for-profit organizations and give advice on land use issues. And the panels that we put together are multidisciplinary panels that, they consist of a variety of experts and we assemble them to tackle the specific issue. This panel consisted of Dan Reuter who's here today, the moderator of the panel, Joe Allen from Gwinnett Place CID, Bob Beagle, a planner with Lordak and Sargent Architects and Planners, Russ Kellogg who is a developer with Kellogg Brooks Developments, Gary Monjean with Leaky Advisory Group. He is a market expert, market research expert. Ade Sanusi who's here today with the Integral Group, a specialist in complex and mixed-use developments. Robert Svedberg with TVS Design, an architect who specializes in large public infrastructure projects. Addie Weber with, formerly with Jacobs, who is a planner and she was involved in the Aratropolis CID planning. Myself, we had a technical writer, Paige Lozier, and as well some leadership from John Thule with ARC and staff involved in this. Sarah Kirsch, the executive director, and Barbara Bowers who's here today with us. So a couple of us have the opportunity to present the report to you and I'll introduce someone as we go and then come back. We want to be mindful of your time and we'll have some time for questions at the end, but I'm going to just give you guys a brief summary of the report which you've had the opportunity to review. So the staff put together these four key questions for the panel to address during the two-day program and they revolve around the Mountain View District, how Clayton County can maximize its economic development impact, what's the best way to create an entertainment district in the district, how important branding is and what strategies the county could employ to give the district a new identity, and which of the Atlanta Regional Commission's livable community initiative recommendations would be most critical in establishing the district as an economic engine for the county. So the panel started with a, what we call a SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and looked critically at the district. I'll show a plan of the district, but I know everybody here is familiar with it, but we're looking at the area across the connector or 75 from the airport. We'll see a plan in a minute, but the, sorry, I realized I skipped strengths. The strengths are, we identified were that it's the connectivity to Aratropolis and the initiatives that are in place through the broader region. There's good utility infrastructure in place. There's a lack of dissenters in the immediate area that might not be favorable towards redevelopment of the district. There's a lot of publicly controlled land by the county, City of Atlanta, the Airport Authority, as well as the connectivity to the International Terminal and the new development at Porsche and some of the other new developments that are underway across the highway. And interstate access is very good. The weaknesses that they, that the panel identified are the lack of identity, the fragmented ownership in the area, some of the older land uses and the older zoning ordinance that might restrict the type of development that the county would like to see in the district. And then opportunities, these are not necessarily challenges, but areas that the panel saw that could be utilized for future, for growth for the district. So the opportunities are to harness the infrastructure of Aratropolis, utilize the various economic development tools in place, the opportunity to refresh the zoning ordinance to promote the type of development the county would like to see, the connectivity for MARTA, and some of the quality of life improvements that are taking in place around the Aratropolis district. And finally, some of the threats to new development are the current land use, the level of demand for industrial and distribution space that is in place today. Some of the, some of the past challenges of lack of a champion for development in the district and there's a patchwork of privately-owned sites in the district that prohibit larger development and also the identity created by some of the streets. This is a plan of the area, and I know I cannot point at that with this, but showing the various property ownership and how much is controlled by various individuals, but also shows some of the opportunities of publicly-controlled land for, to use as economic redevelopment. Now I'm going to introduce Dan Reuter who's going to speak to the zoning and the group's findings related to that.
Thanks, Jay. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you all for having us here tonight and we'll try to be very brief. Hopefully everyone in the audience knows a bit about the Mountain View area. It's an area east of the airport that was bought out during a time when the planes were a lot noisier and I guess we were trying to protect folks from that. And now planes, because of technology, FAA has allowed some of those lands to come back into certain kinds of uses. They're still not going to be a residential use, but you know, it's a very complicated situation right now with the different ownership there in Mountain View. The city of Atlanta's ownership, county, there's private ownership. And one of the best things the county can do to really protect and to try to guide some vision is through zoning. Right now it's zoned, there's a good deal of the land that's zoned commercial, some of which is the city of Atlanta's land, other industrial sites that are zoned there and most of it's vacant. And so right now it's kind of an unpredictable situation. So what the group, the ULI TAP suggested is that we, I think the zoning that was there probably when it was changed was seen as a placeholder. How do we bring that into sort of a modern vision of what the zoning should be and that gives the county a lot of control over what could occur? And so some of the, some of the examples, both the Ford, former Ford manufacturing facility which is now where Porsche is located, and then also the GM manufacturing facility up in Dorville, they both used a very similar zoning that's kind of called a form-based zoning or mixed-use. So we're suggesting something like that be considered here too. So the process would be trying to get, you know, bring some of those local property owners that are there, the private owners, the city of Atlanta, Clayton County, bring everyone to the table, have a public process for the residents and others that are in the area. We really feel like you're going to need some additional resources. Georgia Power helped fund this report, but we think you're going to need some other consultants possibly too. And again, we think it, you know, this is a real important area for Clayton County, so how do we get, you know, the local folks there, the airport and others sort of supporting something to happen on this property? Again, the property's kind of off of I-75, so it's not real visible to folks, but it's an important site. So again, we're suggesting something like a mixed-use form-based code that would allow a lot of flexibility for, but it'd also sort of keep some of the uses that you may two. And again, we think it, you know, this is a real important area for Clayton County, so how do we get, you know, the local folks there, the airport and others, sort of supporting something to happen on this property? Again, the property's kind of off of I-75, so it's not real visible to folks, but it's an important site. So, again, we're suggesting something like a mixed-use form-based code that would allow a lot of flexibility for, but it'd also sort of keep some of the uses that you may not want out there right now. It could be an industrial use or something else, it could keep some of those things from happening today. And I will turn it over to Ade. And I'll be back for another slide.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, could you please restate your name?
My name is Ade Sanusi and I'm with the Integral Group. Thanks, I'm happy to be with you all tonight. The top questions we try to answer is branding. Branding is, we see it as a soft, it's more of the soft piece, but it's an integral part of what this plan is all about. There's always, people think, you know, build it and they will come, but in this new twenty-fourth century, what we find out is there's a piece of what needs to get done before the development comes up. So, here we look at identity, how can we build on the strengths of the Mountain View area, and also how do we tie it to the existing narratives, meaning Clayton County as a whole and the region itself. So, in our findings, what we find out was first, there is a lack of focused identity and visibility as it surrounds the Mountain View area. And we believe this, there's a great opportunity to leverage its location and proximity to the airport, which by the way, as we all know, you know, more than a hundred million passengers go through the airport on an annual basis. So, what we said is, how can we refocus the image of Mountain View in a way that it becomes a regional employment corridor and an activity center? So, what does that mean? It means in doing that, we will use it to represent Clayton County, stronger identity and a broader message, just leveraging of, as I said, the proximity to the airport. In addition, we also want to connect it to the Eritropolis. So, we felt that the Mountain View area would become not only a gateway to Clayton County, but also a gateway to the world. So, the question is, how do we intend to do this? Clayton County has got a very key responsibility, which we felt would be to simplify the redevelopment process, be the champion of a new process that will, that will show that the Mountain View area is open for business, open to the world, and in order to attract locations. So, we talked about branding it as an international gateway that will open up opportunities for progressive, diverse, and high-tech industries. As we all know, that's the Porsche headquarters, that's a good start, we felt there's an opportunity to leverage on that. MARTA is now, is coming to Clayton County, there's also an opportunity to leverage the MARTA brand. TOD is huge, transit is not only seen as a means of taking people from one location to another, it's basically an amenities that companies look for, residents all like, so we felt there's an opportunity to brand, to use that as a branding opportunity. Infrastructure. An example of this is the Peachtree Street in downtown connector, we felt there could be a signage that can be on some of the bridges and overpasses as a branding opportunity for the Mountain View area. In our findings, you know, we came up with some uses that are critical, hospitality, office, food and beverages one, logistics is already in place, but by having this branding done, we could leverage off of that. In a nutshell, what we felt is that the, there is an opportunity to probably hire a rebranding marketing consultant to come up with a new name that would not only rebrand and position Mountain View as more of an OACs in the middle of Clayton County. There are currently existing tools that are in place, the tax allocation district is one, enterprise fund, free trade zone is one, we already talked about zoning. Putting all of these together, we believe we, be an opportunity to jumpstart the project. I will turn it over to Jay.
Oh, sorry, this is Dan.
So, you know, again, if this property had been one ownership and right on I-75 and we would have already seen something happen on it. One of the reasons it's still sitting there is it's kind of stuck back behind some other development, a lot of fragmented ownership. We're finally going to have good access to it with the extension of, what's the road that's being?
Conley.
Well, it's Conway, but it has a new name, doesn't it? Anyway. Thank you, CW Grant.
Oh, okay.
So, the extension is going to give a lot of new access to this area and so, really, the time is critical now, because it's going to, a lot of folks that have property there are going to, you know, consider opportunities to sell their property or try to do something with their property. And so, right now, it's a little bit unpredictable. So, we really feel like the county should immediately kind of engage this public-private partnership we've talked about, immediately look at the zoning and maybe even go ahead and consider a moratorium right now on building permits until you can get something else in place. There's not a lot of construction happening right now, so that might not be an issue, there's not any probably happening on a lot of this property. But it'll allow us to get in there and get the county involved in sort of creating an updated master plan, rezoning the property. And then, the other thing that's been, was talked about a lot in here is, again, how do you bring all the different property owners together? There's some of this property that actually the ownership's not well-known, how can we go through a process of creating a solid sort of a plan and know all the ownership so then that group of city, county, everyone can move forward? And then, there's, like I said, there's some big infrastructure investments already in the works and then, of course, Splosh, I think Splosh paid for the CW Grant with GDOT extension.
And then, kind of to bring it all together and focus on transformation of the district, some of the tools to look at for creating the district are some of the principles that MARTA has developed for their transit-oriented development and that's something to consider as MARTA expands into the district, incentivizing density, encouraging mixed-use, and being thoughtful about parking and public space in the district, and really looking at design in the district and potentially using the zoning ordinance to encourage good design that's going to represent the future of the district and the county well. And that goes into playing off the proximity to the airport, ensuring flexibility of uses, using zoning and other tools and planning, creating an urbanized suburban node that will really create an attraction for the region, for livability, and encourage people to want to be there, to either work, live, shop, and be mindful of some of the challenges in the market for retail and some of the other uses, and don't base the plan around one specific use, rather a mixture of uses, and put the fundamentals in place to encourage that. And then, finally, the team was asked to look at a timeline for these steps. So, the team came up with short-term recommendations, long-term recommendations, and then ideas for what can be done in the midterm. And we mentioned a few of these already, but looking at assembling the properties, dedicating staff to address these challenges, looking at the zoning, potentially creating a regulating plan, and making steps to hold off development until the plan is in place, and then begin the rebranding process. And then, in the midterm, the, kind of the one-to-five-year period, look at collaborating with MARTA, start to select key master development partners, consolidate the economic development tools, expand the community improvement district, and then potentially bring in a marketing and branding consultant to facilitate the branding of the area. And then, in the long-term, support MARTA and their plans to expand into the district, hopefully with alternative means, encourage connectivity to the airport, begin, really, and this is six to ten years out, really start beginning development in the district and collaborate with the stakeholders, including GDOT. One of the recommendations is to develop a new I-285 interchange and that's clearly a long-term objective, just like MARTA, but it'll encourage improving connectivity. So, that sums up the report that we put together and the findings over the two-day period. As you can see, it was a pretty intense effort, but we know we've given you a lot of information and wanted to give you the opportunity to ask any questions of us while we're here representing the panel.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. Are there any questions for them, by the board members? Any questions? Again, thank you for being here this evening.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you all. Good to see you again, Dan.
And our final presentation for this evening is on the capital improved, I'm sorry, capital projects update as presented by the Deputy Chief Operating Officer, Alex Kohelis.
Appreciate the opportunity to give you an operational review on Splosh and capital projects. This evening, we're going to cover three main topics. First, we're going to do a review of what was accomplished in 2017, then we're going to cover what you can expect in the years 2018 and 2019, and lastly, we're going to focus on highlighting five Splosh projects, which will be coming off the assembly line first in 2018. 2017, this is what we accomplished. We rebuilt the existing animal control facility, we repaired the International Dam, we completed Lake Spivey Trail Phases One and Two, and Phase Two completed four months ahead of schedule. We were able to remediate severe mold problems in eight major facilities, which also, one of which led to the remodeling of the second floor of this administration building. We began, and I'm pleased to report that we are fifty percent complete on the Flatsholes Park multi-purpose facility and forty percent complete on the Rivers Edge Trail Project Phase One. This is not a capital project and it's not a Splosh project, but it's a project that I want to report progress on. We have purchased three hundred and twenty MARTA waste containers, we have in the last two days received and installed the first sixty of these. By Thursday, we will receive a total of, we will have received a total of two hundred and forty-eight, and by early March, we will have all three hundred and twenty installed at every single bus stop in Clayton County. The original Splosh program, construction program schedule called for completion of vertical construction projects by the year 2021. With our team of architects and program managers, we have aggressively accelerated that schedule by two years. We're now scheduled to complete by third quarter of 2019, which will end up saving the county close to two million dollars in program management fees. Over the next twenty-four months, you can expect that we will have twenty-two projects simultaneously under construction, representing sixty-five million dollars' worth of capital projects, which will be both Splosh and county-funded. This represents a dramatic change from the past. The most we have historically ever completed in one year is five capital projects. We are, as you can see, we're on target to more than double that completion rate. One of the goals that we have set for all our architectural teams is that we have demanded innovative designs, featuring durable construction, quality materials, we have had them focus on low maintenance and energy efficiency, and most importantly, we want each and every project delivered on time and on budget. Our capital projects that you'll see coming online over the next two years fall in four major categories: community enhancement, public safety, quality of life and leisure, and technology. Of these twenty-two, I would like now to feature the first five major projects, which will be coming off the assembly line in the next few months. First and foremost, the long-awaited District Four Recreation Center and Administration Building. It will be located within International Park. It'll integrate with a trail system, which we have, that circumnavigates the park. It, as you see, has a modern, family-friendly design with a lodge feel. In addition to the indoor swimming pool, we'll be offering new amenities, which have never been offered to our citizens before, such as a spin-cycle studio, CrossFit Training Center, cafe and coffee shop. We've, the cross-the-top, you'll see the progress bar, we have the land, we've completed the concept phase, we're almost complete, totally complete with the design phase and prepared to go to bidding. We expect to break ground in May of 2018. We project a thirteen-month, excuse me, thirteen-to-fourteen-month construction phase, construction period and expect to open the facility in August of 2019. The Northeast Senior Center will be located on Anvil Block Road near the Northeast Police Precinct and the New Animal Control Center. It will represent the fourth Splosh-funded senior center for Clayton County. Key features of this new facility will be a lapped swimming pool, a state-of-the-art fitness center, a community garden, and it'll have large multi-purpose rooms, which can be used for performing arts and other activities as dictated by our programming needs. Projected timeline, we expect to break ground in June of 2018, thirteen-month construction schedule, facility opening is targeted for August of 2019. The Northwest Clayton Library will be located on Riverdale Road, very close, adjoining to the property of the Frank Bailey Senior Center. It will represent the seventh library in Clayton County. It will feature a forty-person-capacity meeting room. It will have multiple enclosed rooms for reading and studying. It'll have charging stations for iPhones, laptops, mobile devices. It'll have collaborative spaces where young people can create and learn in the areas of science, technology, engineering, and math. Projected groundbreaking in April of 2018, construction expected to take from April of eighteen to June of 2019. We expect to open the facility somewhere in July of 2019. Fire Station Number Nine, this will replace the one we're having to relocate because of the road realignment up in the Mountain View area. It will be in a prime location on CW Grant Parkway near Old Dixie. It will overlook the International Terminal of Atlanta-Hartsfield-Jackson Airport. As you can see, it'll have a very modern, environmentally friendly concept, in addition to all the normal spaces that you would expect in a fire station, a day room, a bunk room, apparatus room, it will feature about eight thousand square feet and have a fitness We expect to break ground in 2018 and expect about a ten-month construction period with facility opening April of 2019. This is not the new information technology building, okay? This is what we presently have. This building was constructed in the early seventies and frankly, outlived its life cycle. It is no longer suited for a modern government faced with the technological challenges and requirements of the modern age. This is what we have, this is what we will build. This new building will house critical technology operations for the entire county, it will serve as a technology training center, it will have flexible seating for up to forty people, where our IT department will be able to conduct to conduct mass training sessions for all our employees, to help them become more familiar with all the new software programs that you all have funded for us to help us run our government in a more efficient fashion. It will allow also for strategic and secure growth of our technology infrastructure. I think I failed to mention it's going to be located at the corner of Poston Road on Terra Boulevard, near the Justice Complex. It's scheduled to break ground in May of 2018. We project that it'll be complete construction in March of 2019, and we'll project to open the facility in April of 2019. It's one thing for me to show you a picture and tell you about the features of a building, and it's quite another for me to take you on a virtual tour of the building. But that's exactly what I would like to do for you and the citizens of Clayton County tonight, in order to give you all a glimpse of what our future looks like. I would like to point out that we intend to use animation to help show and broadcast over a series of platforms, using social media, our websites. We want to use this type of animation to create an infomercial, so that our citizens can see exactly what we are building with their tax dollars. And then, what we will do is, as the buildings are being built, we'll transition from animation to live video, and then, when they're completed, we will show them, we'll transition from what the animation was to show what it was, how we finished the building, so they'll be able to see it. Before I go any further, I would like to just take a minute and just introduce Keith Solomon and Joe Gardner of Gardner Spencer Smith Tension Jarboe. They're the architectural firm that is doing the IT building and the ones that provided the animation, if you would stand. Thank you very much. I would also like to thank Brian Garrison and Jason Brookings of our IT Department for their help, and also thank Greg Dixon of Marlin Alta-Belly for all his help and assistance in helping me put this together. We have more information. We're going to be posting all this on our new Clayton County SPOLOSH website, which we've updated. We'll be going live next week. It's an upgrade from what we have. I want to give you just a, this will give you a flavor of what it's going to look like. You'll be able to link and go to it. It will show all the closed projects, everything that's been done, and we'll be shooting drone video of all the finished products, and we'll have animation and announcement. And I've already spoken to some of you Commissioners, and we've already shot some video, and you'll be able to introduce projects in your particular districts and speak directly to your constituents about what's coming. So, that's all I have for you this evening, but I appreciate the opportunity to give you progress in what we've done, and what we're labeling is progress for Clayton and pennies for progress. So, that's it. Thank you.
All right, is there any questions for?
Yes, sir. First question I have is, I noticed, I didn't see anything about intergenerational facility. You've been promising me some info for a while. Where is that?
I highlighted the first five. We'll be bringing out in the next, we'll be bringing out in the next two or three meetings, we'll be bringing you updates.
Okay.
So, that'll be in the next wave.
Okay, so we're going by, almost like by district? Is that it? Because everything seemed to be in District Four.
No. Now, we have District Four.
I had library, police precinct, multipurpose.
Gotcha. Another question for you, though, on the projects, on the mold problems that we've been eradicating. I received information that, and I actually went over to Jim Uwe, they said that they're done at that facility, but it's still in shambles in that one room, and water's still sitting around the building. It's just sitting there.
What's going to require for us to fix that facility in total is we have to do complete regrading. We've been in full court press. Our building and maintenance department has been spread, has been spread as far as they can. They've been addressing mold at the Health Department, mold at, we just remediated eight projects, and we've taken care of that. We're dealing at DFACS. We're dealing with the Frank Bailey. So, it is on our list. There's nothing lingering. We're working as fast as we can.
Right, because I just got a call today, though, about that one room that they said they're done, but I went in there and the baseboards are just sitting there.
Yeah, what happens is, ma'am, what we do is, we test for mold. When we find it, then we remediate it. Well, first, we have to stop the source. You know, if it's coming from a water leak, we have to stop it from infiltrating before we can go back in and seal it back up. So, in that case, right there, what we have to do is make sure that we're not getting any more seepage. That's going to require us regrading and re-improving the drainage around there. Once we address that, then we can close it up, because then we'll have to do post-testing. So, there's a whole process involved.
Okay, and just as we are building new facilities, can we keep in mind that we have intense quality controls? Because one of the things I am noticing, as we travel throughout the buildings now, you often hear, "Well, it wasn't built properly," or "This wasn't done right," or "If you look at these walls." And I just want to make sure that we eliminate that as a statement, if that makes sense.
Oh, yeah. Well, I have a long history in construction. We have our building and maintenance director, who is now onboard, and he attends every single planning meeting in which we spec out. We're focusing on making sure that we use materials that are going to be low maintenance. We don't, we want to reduce our legacy costs going forward. We also have taken all of the problems that we have learned in the past, things that have caused mildew problems, things that have caused water leaks, things like when they say value engineering when it comes to HVAC problems, that have ended up causing us problems in the past. We're eradicating that with our, by addressing them through our engineers and architects and planning the new buildings.
Gotcha. And then, one last thing, we can actually probably deal with it later, but I've also received several calls, being, dealing with the VIP complex and whether that's going to be shut down, when it's shut down, because that's one of the areas that it may sit in one district, however, the entire county utilizes that facility. And there have been some questions about that. When will some information be released in terms of timelines of that project and so forth?
Well, we're going to be doing a lot of work on that entire south end. We're going to have, it's not going to be safe, for instance, the, we're going to be doing trail through there, we're going to do a rec center, and then, we're going to be bringing options for how we're going to deal with the VIP center. That'll be coming forward in the next two or three months. It will be safest to shut down that whole beach area, the whole south end of the park, leave the north end of the park for use for our citizens, but it would be unsafe to try and allow people to use portions of the park on the south end while you have construction going on, because we're going to have two or three projects going on at the same time, and it would be highly risky to have children trying to reach certain areas to play when we have construction trucks going in and out of there. So, we've got a, we're working on a master plan on how to coordinate all those projects at one time, and that will be a separate presentation.
So, I said that was the last one. So, will the beach be closed? Are you closing it, you know, indefinitely, or what are we doing with it?
No, no, the beach will have to be closed for a period of time. Only the period of time is it'll be impacted for construction. There's no plan to close it permanently. That would take Board action.
Okay, all right. I just got calls on it. Thank you so very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you for your presentation. Hey, ma'am, I have Mr. Hancock come make an announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We've been requested to announce, there was an advertisement running in News Daily by an applicant for a stream buffer variance affecting 4820 Highway 42. The advertisement indicated that there would be a public hearing tonight in the event that anybody is here for that. We wanted to make them aware, the applicant asked us to make them aware, it will not be tonight. It will be on the agenda for the next meeting. It was just a mistake about when that was occurring. I want to let them know in case somebody's here.
Okay, thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman, the Board would now consider the consent agenda.
All right, are there any items on the consent agenda that a board member would like to have taken off?
Just separate, G.
You want to take G separately?
I just got a question on G.
You have a question on G? Well, we can approve it. Go ahead and let those leave, leave who are leaving. If you're leaving, could you exit quickly, please?
I just got one quick question, and I probably will. No, it's fine. It's no big deal. It's just.
If we need to separate it, then now it's time to do it.
Okay, we just leave it on there, but.
Okay. Okay, the consent agenda.
Unless we can hold, I don't know if we can hold it. Just do it separate. Mr. Chair, can we take Item G separately?
Not on the consent agenda. We can take it and put it on the regular agenda.
Correct, yes, sir.
You want to put it on the regular agenda? Okay, so, are you placing a motion to place Item G on the regular agenda?
Yes.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is unanimous? Are there any other items on the consent agenda a board member would like to see removed? All right, with that in mind, then I'll take a motion to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of Item Not G. Is there a motion?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is unanimous?
Want to do that one, though?
Mr. Chairman, Item G is Carol Rogers, Central Services, present.
Yes, please take the podium. We'll take that item first.
Hey, Ms. Rogers.
Hello. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Item that we're removing, which is number seven for me, I will start off, it's a recommendation of award for ITB 17-175, which is the purchase of county motorcycles with Honda. This is for the Transportation and Development Department, the Fleet Division. The recommendation for award is to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, meeting the specifications, which is DF Honda, located in Grapevine, Texas. Funding is available through the general fund and the 2015 SPOLOSH program. The request is for you to approve the recommendation, authorize the chairman, his designated, to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contract, and authorize the CFO to amend the budget accordingly.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
Yes, sir. It's a simple question. I know that we changed some time ago to start purchasing cars through Allen Vigil, because they're local. So, my only question is about the purchasing Honda, is Honda going through that?
Honda motorcycles? There is no motorcycle local?
That's what I was asking. I didn't, there are no motorcycles.
No, there's not a local one. No, and there's not one in Clayton County.
Can you just, can you state that, so that everybody can hear it?
Sure, there's not a, right, there's not a local Honda dealership within Clayton County.
Local motorcycle?
Motorcycle, for the Hondas.
Okay.
Yes, because that's, was the type of motorcycle that was needed for that police department, so there is not a local one within Clayton County.
Okay, wonderful. That's all I needed.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is unanimous?
The Board would now consider the request of Director of Human Resources, Pamela Amplis.
We'll take your items separately.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. Human Resources, we have only one request for personnel. On behalf of the Office of the Chief Operating Officer, Human Resources is requesting to delete the following: Broadcast Communication Manager, total compensation $68,008. Marketing and Communication Manager, total compensation $68,008. And lastly, our Printing Services Supervisor, total compensation $57,294. We're requesting to add a Communication Administrator, Grade 32, Step 1. Total compensation for this position during the current budget year is $32,761 from April to June. If approved, the request will result in a $98,067 cost savings for Clayton County. Moving forward, this position of, at a Grade 32, Step 1, compensated at $72,661 for a total compensation of $97,024.
Okay, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? A second to motion, are there any questions?
Yes. On that 90-something thousand dollars, is that, is that just for the period of April through June?
Yes, ma'am, it's for this current budget year.
It says $32,000. It said the whole year, not the budget year. The time that it's funded.
Okay. Were you asking about the savings, Commissioner Hamburg?
The first number you quoted.
Uh-huh.
What was that, 98?
The savings? Yes, ma'am, $98,067.
Okay, that's what I'm asking. Is that for the period of April through June, or is that for the entire next budget year?
It's for this, for the current budget year.
Which ends?
Which ends June 30th. So, it is for the current budget year, and the $97,024, that's the total compensation for the position moving forward.
Any other questions? All right, hearing none, those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Is unanimous, thank you.
I'm up next.
Presentation, yes.
Next is the presentation, the introduction of the 2018-2019 Benefit Strategy. It's going to be presented by the HR Director, Pamela Amplis, at Epic Insurance.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioners. Human Resources in Epic, we would like to briefly present our two thousand eighteen Benefit Strategies to the board for your consideration. Data collected from our state interview process as well as our annual benefit survey indicate cost, communication, and options as among the most important concerns for our employees. Those concerns are the primary drivers of our strategy. And Mr. Chris Clark from Epic will facilitate the presentation to the board. Afterwards, we will ask the board to approve of the, um, strategy so that we can move forward. Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Good evening, and, uh, sorry. It's a pleasure to be before you again and to run through this strategy that we've put together, working with Director Amboz and her team for the benefits for the upcoming June first renewal period. So, just to highlight, would be introducing a new high deductible plan with a health savings account component, which would be the first step in a move to, uh, move the employee population to more of a consumerism type of, of approach to utilizing their health benefits. Are you hearing me okay?
You meant consumer driven?
Consumer driven, yes.
Yes, sir.
We also are recommending consolidating the current voluntary benefits program into a common, uh, under a common carrier utilizing group products and enhancing some of the products that are being made available. Integrating the voluntary products into the Infinity HR Benefit Administration System, which is what the county's utilizing for benefits administration as well as benefits enrollment, online enrollment. As part of that process, there's going to be some no-cost value adds that are going to be included by the voluntary benefits vendor. We'll touch on that a little bit more towards the end. We'd also be adding what's called the Zero Out-of-Pocket Program, which is a discount program for imaging services. When employees utilize this program, they would have a, a zero out-of-pocket cost and it would actually also save the, the county, the plan, a little bit of money as well. We're also recommending a fairly modest formulary change to the prescription drug program. This would be just, um, changing some of the placement of some of the, of the pharmaceuticals to maximize the efficiency of the pharmacy program, instituting, instituting some more, um, utilization management controls into that benefit while not actually reducing the benefit itself. As part of the open enrollment process this year, because of a number of changes being made, we're recommending having a one-on-one session with enrollment counselors so that employees will be able to get the, as much education as possible about the new change and some advice in terms of, of how they should enroll going forward. And then as part of that one-on-one benefit enrollment process, we're going to include a dependent verification component, which is just a, it's, it's a good idea in terms of overseeing the benefit program to have that periodically, just to make sure that folks enrolled in the plan are eligible to be enrolled in the plan. So, going into a little bit more detail, and feel free to stop me anytime with questions. Um, just looking at the Aetna renewal, which is the, uh, vendor that's providing your self-insured program currently. Projection, we did some projections by our actuary and this sheet kind of shows that, to not go into, to too much detail where there might not be questions. But overall, we're projecting an increase of about three percent in that program compared to current budget. But we also looked at, you know, when taking into account the, the, uh, consumer-directed type of approach as a new option and assuming a, a ten percent migration to that new option for the first year, which we believe is a fairly conservative estimate. We end up overall with, with just a little bit over a zero percent increase to budget on that program. A point four percent increase on the self-funded program. Looking at the Kaiser renewal, they initially came out with a, just, just shy of four percent renewal. Um, and we negotiated that down just a little bit and it's ended up at a three percent renewal. We also asked Kaiser for a, a lower cost option as well, which they provided. It's shown on the far right side of this particular, um, slide, what those rates would be. And those are, those were actually adjusted a little bit more beyond, uh, what was shown here. But the ultimate result was about an eleven percent decrease on that new plan with a three percent increase to the current plan. So, we would be offering that as a new option as well, again alongside the current programs. Assuming a ten percent movement on that pla, that program as well, we would end up with an overall change of about two percent in the cost on that plan. Or on that combination of plans with Kaiser. So, looking at all that combined on this next slide, up at the top, if, if we just renewed as-is with the current programs, we'd be looking at a three percent cost increase. But looking at some of the changes that we're proposing, I guess, moving all the way to the bottom, if you will, with the ten percent migration to the lower cost plans, the pharmacy, the modest pharmacy change on the Aetna program and the addition of the Zero Out-of-Pocket Program, we're looking at a one percent increase to budget overall for the health benefits program or just shy of three hundred thousand of total increase in cost. And just touching on, you know, that's the, the active and pre-sixty-five program. You also have Medicare folks that have coverage and there's a Kaiser component to that and an Aetna component to that. This is just showing, you know, the Aetna component already occurred, but the Kaiser increase on that piece would be three point eight percent. And then looking in just a little more detail on the new low option from Kaiser. So, the, the column on the left here on this exhibit shows the high-level summary of benefits under the current program with the, the low option shown. And you can see where the benefits are, are clearly lower there, but there is a, a fairly significant savings. And we show that at the bottom right in summary that it'd be about just shy of fifty-nine dollars a month premium savings overall for single in a hundred and eighty-two dollars family for, uh, moving to that lower option.
Go back to the other one for a second, please.
Yes, ma'am.
I want to see the out-of-pocket max again. Thank you.
You good? Okay. So, similarly comparing the, the, uh, Aetna, what we would call CDHP or Consumer Directed Health Plan Option with an HSA. This shows the comparison of the current lifestyles with the high-level, uh, components of the benefit coverage with what would be offered under the new plan. The most significant component here is the addition of an HSA or a Health Savings Account where the, the county would fund this amount of money and then the employee would have a significantly higher deductible. But they would be getting, again, the eight hundred dollars and they would also be, be getting a fairly significant savings on the premium side. The idea here being that with this pot of money, if you will, the employee would then become more, act more like a consumer because they would be spending money that they could otherwise keep if they didn't spend it or if they spent it more efficiently. It would be money that they could keep. And so, um, the, the theory with that approach is that, that people would then treat healthcare purchasing more like you treat other types of purchasing, where you shop around, um, you know, try, you know, try not to waste money, try to, to, to spend the money most efficiently, et cetera. And then ultimately that leads to, um, a more effective cost management within the health program. Looking at that particular option, a little bit more detail, looking at each tier and what that would look like. The slide before, we were really looking at the single tier. This would be, and this would, this next slide here that we're looking at would be what, what that would break down to on the employee, uh, plus spouse and employee plus children and family. So, we'd be, we would double the HSA and also have a, the higher deductible across those other tiers of coverage for this type of plan. Getting to the, a little more information on the voluntary benefit redesign, if you will. We would be consolidating again under a single carrier and offering group-based products exclusively moving forward. So, we'd have a group accident plan, group critical illness, a group limited benefit, which is sometimes called hospital indemnity, a whole life program, and a group gunshot wound policy. All of these would be guarantee issue, at least up to certain levels. And for, and for the majority of these, and for the majority of folks, they would be a somewhat of an enhancement of benefit or somewhat of a lower premium and in many cases both.
Excuse me, you listed group accident, does that include DI coverage? It does show on and off, but the accident coverage could just cover for accident. Is it going to cover for disability as well?
I would have to double-check that to be sure I've got the, um, I, I can access the, the actual quote as soon as, but I'd have to get back to you on that if that's okay.
No problem.
Okay. I'd mentioned there would be some value adds that would be free to employees in the county. Um, as part, this is an enhancement offered from the, uh, voluntary, uh, carrier. There would be a, uh, accidental death and dismemberment coverage from Chubb, um, or provided through Chubb, Chubb's not the carrier, but of five thousand dollars available to all benefit-eligible employees if we had at least fifty percent engagement. And then there'd be a enrollment expense reimbursement. This would be something that would come back to the county to help offset any costs associated with the enrollment process, communications of the new benefit program, et cetera. And that amount, that money, you know, could then be utilized for various things, potentially wellness, et, et cetera, at the discretion of the county. That would be, uh, with seventy-five percent engagement. So, that's not an either or, we would get both of those. Based on the proposed approach, we would have close to a mandatory enrollment process because of the wanting to make sure that the information is communicated as effectively as possible in the one-on-one enrollment setting. There'd also be a well card discount program that would be made available to employees. That would just, that's just a card that provides discounts for various, um, health-related purchases that a employee might make. And then also, a program called Knowledge of Financial Education, which would be a component to help enhance the wellness, uh, program that, um, Director Amboz is, is, um, rolling out and expanding upon from kind of the financial wellness perspective, if you will. So, while this says options one and two, we're really, we're really proposing doing both of these things. What we're talking about here is just really portion one, if you will. There'd be written communications and group education sessions that we would put together and roll out for the benefit of the employees to help communicate the, the benefits program and the changes. And really, changes is probably too strong word. Enhancements is a better word to use in this situation, which is to make sure that that's well communicated and understood by employees. And then that followed with the actual enrollment process itself, which would be, again, the one-on-one sessions where employees would be able to speak directly, one-on-one with an enrollment counselor who would make sure they understood the benefits and assist them in their process of, of enrolling this time around. And then just wanted to take a second, as we close, to mention that there's also some ongoing efforts in the continuing strategy development around the employee benefits program. We would be looking to implement an employee assistance program or EAP. Um, we've, we've had some discussions with the Director Amboz's team on this already and would be looking to do some type of RFP in the near future to, uh, select the, the best option there. We're further exploring a concept called reference-based pricing, which when we get further along, we'll, we'll possibly bring more information on that back to the board for consideration, possibly for the next year. Um, identifying additional cost containment strategies for retiree benefits, engaging an RFP process to potentially have additional options in the health benefits program. And then a further comprehensive analysis of self-funding versus fully funding to just make sure the county is, you know, financing the health benefits program in the most effective way possible for you. So, with that, I'll close and open the floor to any questions.
Alright, any board members have any questions?
Are we voting on this tonight? No?
Yes.
Can I move that we wait? I need to see more information. We just saw this, this is just information provided. But considering the hit that our employees took last year for the absence of some, I think we need to review it. I need to see the coverages in, in detail. And he, and Mr. Clark doesn't have one of the questions answered. And there are a couple of the questions.
Director Amboz, how would this, what, would there be an impact on, uh, us delaying this?
Yes, Chairman, it would. Um, because we have to, uh, start the open enrollment process. I will admit that we were a little behind the curve with this because we were going through the RFP process to select a broker and a consultant. So, that kind of put us behind the, the, uh, curve a little bit. In terms of timeline, first of all, I would like to introduce, uh, two of my team members who are here.
Angeline, Carolyn, can you, can you come up for me, please?
Every great leader recognizes he is or her team.
No great leader. Yeah, yeah, you got that right, every great leader.
That's right.
Alright, go ahead.
She's a Clayton resident.
Board, this is Ms. Karen Bohannon. Ms. Bohannon has been with the county for over ten years. This is Ms. Angela Jolly. We stole her from the Sheriff Department and Angela is in thirteen, thirteen years. Fifteen years. I'm gonna ask Ms. Bohannon to speak in regards to timelines because she is more familiar with that than I am. So, Karen.
Ms. Bohannon.
Thank you. Um, as far as the timeline for our open enrollment...
I'm sorry, could you speak a little bit closer into the microphone?
Uh, what we had planned for our open enrollment period was to start our retirees off first. We would begin them in, um, the middle of February. That would run for two weeks. Um, once we finish that open enrollment period, we upload the file. We check it manually for any errors, any changes. And then that information then has to be transmitted to our third-party administrator who handles our pension, which is TransAmerica. That file has to be transmitted to TransAmerica no later than April the ninth in order for it to hit the retiree checks on May first. And that's the retirees. As far as the active employees, we had, um, tentatively scheduled the open enrollment period from the twelfth of March through the thirtieth of March, giving three weeks for active employees. Again, once open enrollment is over, we upload the information. We, again, manually check this information for changes and for errors. And then that file is actually physically given to our payroll department who then manually input the information into our payroll system. They need at least a week in order to get that into the system. Um, that file has to be into our payroll's hands no later than April twenty-seventh because the change, I'm sorry, the new deductions, um, need to be on pay period ending May fourth, which would be the May tenth paycheck. Because, again, we pay our premiums a month in advance. So, we are kind of at a crucial point as far as trying to get this taken care of.
Let me say this, if I can, Chair. I know that you all have worked diligently on this and you know this has been my fairly week since I've come in and before now. I realize we're up against a timeline, I know. But my concern is, I look back at the information I got from Director Amboz and it gave us a preamble for tonight. However, we don't, I don't have any details. And the only reason I'm saying that is because I know the concerns of the employees. and I didn't feel like everything was totally answered, this is just overview. So that's my only concern, I don't want to throw anybody off a timeline. But one thing I'm going to say is, after we've spent over a year dealing with this, going back and forth and back and forth, we need to get it right and I've said that one over and over again. I know the board is going to make the decision it needs to make because of the timeline, but I always love the saying, I'm not going to say that, but we got to be prepared and you all have been prepared tonight, but I just think in order to make a decision, I like to read it. I like to look at, because you can look at the deductibles, but what I don't know is exactly what's covered. I want to look at the details of the plan. And the reason being is because we trusted some folks last time and I had employee after employee complaining about these benefits for over a year. So it's just difficult to just go in blindly trusting with just this overview of information. I want to see the details, but that's just me, probably because I work in that industry, but just me.
Ms. Ambles?
I can't vote on it anyway.
Okay, let me ask this question, y'all looked greater detail at this strategy or plan than you did the last time? You paid more attention to this plan?
I believe that the major complaint among the employees were not the benefits themselves, but the, but the, but the cost. So the benefits, we haven't, to my knowledge, we haven't received any complaints in regards to the benefit themselves. It is the cost that they were most concerned about. And this particular strategy, we are attempting to address those three fact, those three dynamics that I spoke of earlier, communication, cost, as well as providing them with options. Now each plan is going to contain the different deductibles, out-of-pocket maximums and so forth. That is what the open enrollment one-on-one sessions are for, so that the employees can hear. We want them educated, we want them to be partners. Before I became HR Director, I was a, just a participant. I paid my premiums and didn't think about anything else. But as a partner, you have the opportunity to really learn, as Mr. Clark said, how it works, how to shop around for the employees to know that we're in it together. You know, it's just not one side, we are in it together. We have done a lot of other things, we have expanded our hours for the benefits administration. We're now open at seven-thirty, ready to do business. We heard communication, so we said, well, let's assign benefits partners to each department. That way each employee will have their own personal person whom they can call on in times of any questions or problems that they may have. It was unacceptable to me that we were doing most of our communication at open enrollment, that's not the way we operate anymore. Additionally, we have started Wellness Wednesdays where we're shooting that information to employees about various topics. So we're doing a lot and I'm proud of what me and my team have done and this is not the end. We're going to continue to do the very best we can. If I had a magic wand and can wave it and everything would be okay, I would do that. But then that would take the fun out of me trying to get us to where we want to be.
All right, any other questions from Ms. Ambles?
It's just a maximum out-of-pocket that I was looking at and trying to look at, but it's fine, whatever you all want to do.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. Madam Clark, let's move on to the next.
The next item was the request for the board to consider the approval of the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen benefit strategy. Did we?
No.
Was the board prepared to take a vote today or we were going to hold off on it?
Ambles, would you, did you formally state what the request here is?
Yes, Board, we are requesting that you all approve the strategy that we have put forth so that we can move forward and start planning open enrollment.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye. Aye. Oppose?
Nay.
Three, two, it passes.
Thank you, Chairman, thank you, Board.
County Attorney Jack Hancock. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I did want to go back to, I needed to hear the no votes for that.
Commissioner Greg, not Greg, I'm sorry, Warner and Commissioner Evans.
And it was simply because I hadn't had a chance to read over it.
Thank you.
Chairman, Board, opposed to legal counsel bringing forth this amendment, I'm actually doing it on behalf of the Office of COO. Freeman Mathews and Gary First Amendment to MOU. Disagreement amends the scope of service of Freeman Mathews and Gary LLP to add responsibilities for providing legal services for central services in the police department. The firm will assign lawyers to both departments, which will result in an increase in cost of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually. Further, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this agreement. To authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense. All may be required under the terms of this agreement.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen. Item twelve is a request from the Clayton County Extension Coordinator regarding the appointment that was submitted by Mr. Sheldon Hammond pursuant to a memorandum of understanding between the county and University of Georgia. University of Georgia is responsible for appointing county extension personnel, subject to the approval of the Board of Commissioners. Your information reflects that Mr. Hammond has interviewed applicants and is, is recommending that Rebecca Hardman be the person appointed to fill that position.
All right, is there a motion to accept or deny the recommendation?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the UGA's recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Commissioner.
If we have to accept it, why don't we have the opportunity to hear from maybe the top people that are being recommended or have actually interviewed? Because it seems like we're constantly getting somebody from outside the county, whereas we've got folks that's been working in this county that we didn't receive any information on. That's just my take on that one.
Any other questions? All right, here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Say again?
I'm sorry, aye.
Okay, those opposed.
For Sheldon Hammond?
So what?
Nay.
To accept the recommendation from UGA.
Nay.
How did you vote, Commissioner?
Aye.
Okay. Three, two, it passes.
Chairman, item thirteen is a request from the Office of Planning, Zoning and Sustainability that the Board of Commissioners accept public improvements, including street and right-of-ways for the village crossing Phase Two at the villages of Ellenwood. Further, to authorize the chairman to execute any documents relating there too and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent to authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, all those may be required.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Thank you, and finally for my, for the added intergovernmental agreement, Mr. Chairman, with the request that the board approve the intergovernmental agreement provided to the clerk by and between Clayton County, Georgia and the Clayton County Public Schools for the purpose of the improvement of Steel Road at and around its intersection with Stagecoach Road. The agreement for your information is modified only from the one that you previously approved only by establishing the exact amount pursuant to the contract which you approved in, in your consent agenda and by providing legal descriptions for the properties that would be conveyed between the parties. Basically what's going to happen is, the school board already owns certain property around that intersection. They're going to convey right-of-way to the county, the county's going to construct the, the new road. The property will then, the school board will pay their portion of the expense, all that set out in the, in the agreement. And at the completion of the project, the county will convey a portion of that road back to the school board and it will come, become a private road for use into the entry into the, into the three schools that I think they plan to build over there.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
We need an executive session for litigation, real estate and personnel, please, thank you.
All right, at this time, we're going to have appointment to the Department of Behavior, Health and Developmental Disabilities for Region Three Advisory Council to fill the unexpired term of Dr. Angelita Howard. She resigned, it's a full-term. What happened? Where am I at? You don't make me lose my spot.
Yeah, because the clerk used to read that.
Now we stopped doing that long time ago. The term expires on February twenty eighth, twenty twenty, full term, full board appointment, are there any recommendations? I have a recommendation of Jana Scott, is there a second?
A second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Appointment to the Water Authority Board to fill the expiring term of John Westervelt. The term is five years, expiring on March first, twenty twenty-three, full board appointment, are there any recommendations?
Mr. Chair, I recommend Mr. Westervelt be reappointed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Is there a motion to go into executive session for litigation, real estate and person?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Want to have a good night? All right, is there a motion to reclaim?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, Mr. Hancock.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, I have a settlement agreement in the case of Milton Stigall Individual and his representative, the estate of Rosa Stigall versus Ricky Webster, Nathan Condry, Ed Al. You had previously approved and authorized this case to be settled and we've been able to settle it within the amount that you authorized. I have an executed agreement which I'll give to the clerk for making for inclusion into the record and we simply ask that you approve this agreement and authorize a settlement.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, we have a refund request from M.A.K. Real Estate Investments LLC for a refund of thirty thousand, five hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-one cents on property allocated at twenty-eight thirty-two Anvil Block Road for the tax year two thousand and seventeen. Our Tax Assessor's Office valued the property at six million, six hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred dollars. The taxpayer contends that its value is five million. Their, their contention is based upon a sale which occurred on December thirty-first of two thousand and seventeen between two entities which, based upon the records of the Secretary of State, are related entities and therefore we have a non-qualifying sale under the regulations of the Tax Assessor's Office. It was for five million dollars. Their recommendation is that this request for refund be denied.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Oh, I have, thank you very much.
Ms. Ambles?
Chairman, Vice Chair and Commissioners, Human Resources is requesting to adjust Police Chief Kevin Roberts' salary from a step thirty-nine seventeen, which is one hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars and fifty-six cents, to a step thirty-nine twenty-six, which is one thou, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eight nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. I'll repeat that to make sure we have it correct for the record, thirty-nine twenty-six, salary one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, nine hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second, Mr. Chair.
Any questions?
My only statement, Ms. Ambles, for the record, would you state that that is the same salary that the previous police chief held?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Any other questions? Here and now, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, names for one, it passes.
Thank you.
All right. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
In favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.